Welcome, everyone. I call the April 7th, 2020 Bothell City Council Meeting to order. The purpose of tonight's special session, special meeting, is to provide an update on the city's COVID-19 response and address a few items requiring council action and discussion. So before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge that our remote meeting format that we have, on March 5th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. So due to this civil emergency, the Governor's Stay Home/Stay Healthy Proclamation under 20-05, the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, and in consideration for the health and safety of our council members, staff, and the public, tonight's meeting is being held remotely. The audio of the meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded and available for listening later on the city's YouTube channel. There is no meeting video tonight. Due to this, tonight's staff presentations will be verbal only. Be prepared to reference the materials in tonight's online agenda packet. Tonight's visitors' comment portion of the meeting will be held, will be in writing only. Comments submitted in writing by 3:00 PM today have been forwarded to all the city council members and will be part of the record. So at this point, we will take a roll call of the council members on the call. Please say "here" when I call your name.
Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
This is Jeanne here, and I'm here.
Councilmember Thompson.
I'm here.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil.
I'm here.
Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Agnew.
He's there.
Councilmember Agnew, can you hear me? Can you state that you're here and present? Please unmute your mic.
Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
I am here.
Okay, great. All present. Thank you.
Great. Welcome, everyone. So in addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City Manager Jennifer Phillips, City Clerk Laura Hathaway, City Attorney Paul Byrne. So are there any other staff members I missed? If so, identify yourself, please. All right, at this time, if you are a member of the public who has joined in the meeting, I would like to welcome you and remind, and as a reminder, your mics will be muted throughout the meeting. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of the meeting guidelines. Please, at the appropriate times, I'll be calling on each member by position number order, asking if they wish to speak or ask a question. I will also be doing this when it is time to vote. If you want to speak, such as to make a motion or second, please indicate by using the WebEx Meeting Messenger. So I'll pause at the appropriate times so you can indicate that you want to speak. And please, mute your microphones when not speaking. For all the meeting attendees, please state your name each time before you speak. For council members, that includes before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. All right, our first agenda item is the meeting agenda approval. Please note that tonight's agenda is final, and only adjustments considered are consent items wishing to be pulled for discussion. If anyone wishes to pull an item, please indicate on your WebEx Meeting Messenger now. And I'll pause and look at the chat window. All right, I'm not seeing any anyone chatting, so we will take that as consent on the meeting agenda. So next, we have the city manager reports. So we have an update on the city COVID-19 response, and here we have Jennifer Phillips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is certainly a unique format for us, and I appreciate everyone's indul- and patience as we work out this system and continue to provide our services and connect with our community now in a different virtual format. This is my first opportunity to address the council and the community following the outbreak of COVID-19. So I just wanted to go through a brief history of what the city's been going through for the last about six weeks or so. Several of the items on the agenda tonight are COVID-19-related, and so as I make those presentations later on, you see the ref- I'm not going to repeat sort of the background. This provides the background of why we're bringing some of those items forward. So in January, February of this year, things seemed relatively normal, and we were welcoming in the year of 2020, and we were starting to hear news of something called the coronavirus, but it seemed distant. But suddenly, by the end of February, it was here in our own very backyard, and Washington in particular, our neighbor in Kirkland, became the epicenter of the COVID-19 outbreak in America. We activated, the city of Bothell activated our emergency communication center on March 2nd. We acted very quickly because we recognized the impact and the magnitude of what was happening in our region. Activating the emergency communication center gives us an opportunity to have a coordinated, organized response to an emergency, and our situation certainly evolved very rapidly. We began very quickly canceling events, recreation classes, and we started to transition our staff to work from home. By March 5th, as the mayor mentioned, he signed an emergency proclamation, which further gave us flexibility to be able to do the things that we needed to do to respond to this emergency event. We started initiating a major transition to work from home following the signing of that emergency proclamation. We closed City Hall to the public. We identified what essential services are, as well as our court reduced their hours. We canceled the March 13th and the March 17 council meetings, and we canceled all the Boarding Commission meetings in March as well as for April. On March 18th, we reduced our parks maintenance. We closed the park restrooms, and shortly thereafter, we closed the park playgrounds. So you can see in such a short matter of time how quickly this emergency emerged. By March 23rd, the governor ordered his Stay at Home/Stay Healthy order. Thankfully, we were already mostly transitioned to work from home and down to essential services, so what many other communities and organizations had to do very quickly, because of our early actions of activating the ECC and starting to implement some of these decisions early, we were in very good shape to be able to immediately be in compliance with the governor's order. What we've been doing since is we've been trying to reach out to our businesses. We know this is a very difficult time for many people in our community, so our Economic Development Manager and our Tourism Manager have been providing their emotional support and trying to connect our businesses with resources that are being provided both by the state, local, and federal governments. Community development continues to process permits and plans and doing some inspections that fall under the emergency proclamation from, or the emergency order from the governor. Parks and Public Works are providing essential services to our community, and of course, our police and fire are out there on the front line, providing response and supporting our community during this unprecedented event. Most notably, I want to thank our Information Services Department. They took us from working at our desks to working remotely and being able to do online meetings with lightning speed, and we really appreciate their efforts to get us into modern technology and the ability to continue to provide services and work from home to keep our employees and our community safe. This is obviously having a dramatic economic impact, not only in Bothell, but in our county, in our state, in our nation, and worldwide. Our businesses are closed. We've lost jobs. Spending has stopped. Our sales tax revenues are obviously going to come down. Fees are not coming in. We're lacking tourism, and we've had to do things like cancel our beloved Fourth of July event. The loss of this revenue is expected to be several million dollars for the calendar year 2020. This will be devastating for the city of Bothell. As we put the 2019-2020 budget together, we knew we already had challenges. We identified a structural deficit and had begun work to improve that structural, or to reduce that structural deficit, but I had warned the council and the staff that as we put 21 and 22 budgets together, we had some real financial challenges ahead of us. This crisis has only significantly worsened those financial challenges. To balance our 2020 budget will require serious budget reductions. The council goals, my recommendation is we suspend the council goals for the remaining period of 2020. We had worked on them in 2019 and made good progress. However, many of those are discretionary, although beloved and important services, we won't have the finances nor the staff capacity to be able to continue work on many of those. Staff will be looking from a leadership perspective of what we can do internally to continue to cut costs, and we just launched the development process for the 21-22 budget. We started that today, and we'll be assessing our options as we figure out a way to deliver a balanced budget to the city council. As you can imagine, on top of everything that's happening from the world perspective, it's a difficult time in the city of Bothell as well for our employees, for our community, for our council. We have some challenges and some very difficult decisions ahead of us. I want to continue to encourage our community to comply with the Stay at Home order. It helps keep everyone safe. I know it's challenging. Last night, King County closed our beloved trails right here through Bothell as the sun shines and it's getting warmer. These things are being done to help us and help us stay healthy. And so I encourage you and those around you to comply with this order and keep us all healthy until we can start to look at recovery and come out of this together and see our future. Although it will look very different, we will still be together, and we will have a bright future in Bothell. So thank you for the opportunity to update you on what we've been doing. I'm incredibly proud of this staff and our community for how we've come together and handled this crisis so far. Thank you.
If anyone wishes to discuss, please indicate on your WebEx Meeting Messenger.
Mayor?
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes. I just want to really applaud our staff, our city manager. This is a very difficult time, and I want to applaud their endurance and their opportunity to help our citizens. So thank you so much. Each and every one of you.
Thank you, Councilmember McAuliffe. We appreciate that.
Anyone else? If so, please use your Messenger chat box. All right. Thank you very much, city manager. I appreciate all your effort and your ELT that's been, you know, working tirelessly through all this challenges and these interesting times we're living through right now. So there's many more days of this ahead of us, so, you know, it's a marathon, so we just have to keep in it together, so. So in keeping with the Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 2028 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing only. Comments submitted to the city clerk, to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. So on the city council reports, if anyone wishes to discuss the city council committee reports, please indicate on your WebEx Meeting Messenger. I know for myself, my committees have been canceled, postponed. All right, I'm not seeing anything. So moving on to the consent agenda, item number four, would a council member like to make a motion? If so, please indicate on your WebEx Messenger now. Oh, actually, let's back up for a second. Councilmember Dorr, you have an update?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is Councilmember Dorr. I just wanted to briefly give the council and the community an update on BRT projects. I was part of a call last week, and it's been out in the news that I wanted to make sure everyone knew that the date for BRT rollout has now moved from 2024 to 2025. So that's obviously difficult to hear, but I thought everyone could know that that change has occurred, and so we won't be getting BRT service in Bothell on 4/5/4/522 until 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorr. Yeah, I know, I think all construction is pausing or stopping or delaying, so not a surprise on that one. All right, on to the consent agenda. So Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Hi, this is Deputy Mayor Zornz here. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember McNeil.
I second that motion. Oh, sorry, Councilmember McNeil, I second the motion.
Great. Thank you very much. So the motion to pass the consent agenda as presented has been made by Deputy Mayor Zornz and seconded by Councilmember McNeil. So if anyone wishes to discuss, please indicate on your WebEx Meeting Messenger. Councilmember McNeil, did you wish to discuss?
Yes, this is Councilmember McNeil. Yes, I will be supporting the motion, but I did want to make a statement that with the plastic bag ban that's on the consent agenda, there's also some concern about reusable bags and the safety of those reusable bags.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. All right, seeing no other discussion, the clerk will read the roll call vote.
Okay, I'm going to read this in position number order. So Deputy Mayor Zornz, please indicate yea or nay on the motion.
This is Deputy Mayor Zornz, yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
This is Councilmember Thompson, yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Councilmember Thompson, yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
This is Councilmember McNeil, yea.
Mayor Olson.
This is Mayor Olson, yea.
Councilmember Dorr.
This is Councilmember Dorr, yea.
And Councilmember Agnew.
This is Councilmember Agnew, yea.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Great. We have a unanimous vote. All right, on to AB 20-47, Consideration of a Resolution Ratifying the City Manager's COVID-19 Emergency Utility Billing Process for Water and Sewer Utility Billing. I'd now like to ask the city manager, Jennifer Phillips, to introduce this item. Council members, please hold your questions until the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Again, the last two items are items directly related to the COVID-19 crisis. The first item relates to your consideration to ratify decisions that I've made with regards to utility billing for water and sewer. Basically, what I've done is I've authorized a temporary waiver of late fees for individuals who are late on their payments. We're pausing shut-offs, so no water will be shut off, and we're also offering flexible payment plans for individuals who might need that, and this is in an effort to support our community through this crisis, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dorr.
This is Councilmember Dorr. I just wanted to ask, I don't remember reading exactly when or how long we'll be keeping that in place. Do we know how long that policy will remain in place? I may have missed it in the packet.
It, we didn't put a specific date to it because we don't know how long this crisis will go on, so it's, we're anticipating 90 days from the point that either the Stay at Home order or the crisis appears to be leveling off, but there isn't an end date to it at this time.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, I really appreciate having made this move to support our community and make sure that everyone has the flexibility with their finances. Those things are just so tough for everybody out there, so I wanted to thank you for your vote. Thank you, members.
And this is Councilmember McAuliffe.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Thank you for the recognition. So how do people qualify for this? That's kind of my question.
It's not a qualification. It's basically, so one, pausing on the shut-offs, we're just, we are not shutting anyone off, so that's not, they don't have to ask for that. That's something that is normal course of business. We give notice, we give notice, and at some point, we, if someone is past due during, throughout our process, there's a point where we shut their water off. We're just not initiating those shut-offs. The other two are available to the community. So one is we're waiving late fees, so they don't have to ask for that, and the other is available to the public if they would like to reach out and request a flexible payment plan.
Okay. And let me ask you this. If there is no shut-off and there is no payment, is there accumulation of what they owe initially down the road?
Yes, they'll still be required to make all of the payments for the use of the water in the sewer, so we're not waiving those, because what happens with utilities is the system costs a certain amount of money. So if you waive individuals, the cost or the bills, their individual bills, the other users then have to pay for that. So everyone else left in the system then picks up any bills that aren't paid by other users, and so those individuals, all of our customers, their bills will continue to accrue, and they will get notices. But again, the payment plans would be made available to them, and their water will not be shut off.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, because you answered my question about the flexibility that we have here. This is, there's no way, we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know how long this is going to go on, so I appreciate your foresight in creating some flexibility where we can be responsible but also be sensitive to a very difficult situation. So thank you, and I have no question. You've answered it.
All right. Councilmember Thompson, did you have a question or comment? I was just going down the list.
I'd just like to echo the comments from everybody else, but I appreciate this. This is not time to be shutting people's water off.
Yes, I agree. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McNeil here. I had a question if any of the other utilities in the area are following the city of Bothell, such as garbage, power, gas utilities.
I don't know about the garbage. I know that other utilities in the area are following and that the governor is also considering, I'm sorry, it's a different, I'm sorry. Other utilities are following and have already implemented many of these provisions. I'm not aware of all the utilities, but I know several. Certainly water, sewer, I believe Puget Sound Energy is taking some of these steps. I don't know about the trash haulers.
Thank you, and I also want to echo the thinking for the leadership on this and looking out for the most vulnerable within our community in this tough time.
And Councilmember Agnew, did you have a question or comment?
This is Councilmember Agnew. I just had a comment. I just want to thank the city manager for doing the right thing for the citizens of our city.
All right, yeah, I too think the city manager, I think this is, you know, just the smallest things that we can do in this time of need for everyone, so. All right, so I'll need a council member to make a motion. If you can please use your WebEx Meeting Messenger to do so. Councilmember Dorr.
I'd like to make a motion to, I can't read my agenda that easily. I motion to pass the ordinance. Sorry.
I can read it.
Yes, can you, I'm sorry, I can't find it. I'm trying to have two screens here, and it's difficult to.
Not a problem at all. All right, thanks for the motion. Councilmember McNeil.
Councilmember McNeil, I second.
All right, great. So we have a motion to approve the resolution ratifying the city manager's emergency actions to temporarily waive utility fee, utility late fees, and postpone water shut-offs for non-payment, has been moved by Councilmember Dorr and seconded by Councilmember McNeil. If anyone wishes to discuss the motion, please indicate on your WebEx Meeting Messenger All right, if there's no further discussion or no discussion, we'll proceed to the vote. Due to tonight's meeting format, we will vote by roll call. The clerk will call each of your names by position number.
Deputy Mayor Zornz, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
This is Jeanne Zornz, yea.
Councilmember Thompson, please indicate yea or nay.
This is Councilmember Thompson, yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe, please indicate yea or nay.
McAuliffe, yea.
Councilmember McNeil, please indicate yea or nay.
This is Councilmember McNeil, yea.
Mayor Olson, please indicate yea or nay.
This is Mayor Olson, yea.
Councilmember Dorr, please indicate yea or nay.
Councilmember Dorr, yea.
Councilmember Agnew, please indicate yea or nay.
Councilmember Agnew, yea.
Thank you. The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, everyone. On to Agenda Bill 20-047, Consideration of Interim Ordinance Temporarily Suspending Development Application and Permit Timelines. So I'd now like to ask city manager Jennifer Phillips to introduce this item. Council members, please hold your questions until the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city council. So this item also supports another aspect of our community, and this is our development community and anyone who's working on some sort of development permit process or construction project. And the city has very specific timelines once a permit has been submitted, and there are ramifications if that permit were to expire. Based on the governor's order and clearly delays that are going to occur in the construction industry, we are recommending a temporary suspension to the expiration of applications and permits, and also to toll permit process time periods to provide additional time for applications processing by the city. We feel that this supports our development community, and we recommend approval of this interim ordinance. And as I was mentioning on the prior item, just where I got the two confused, was the governor's also looking at a statewide suspension or temporary suspension, and so this gets us in line to be able to respond to that if he were to pass that order as well. So just trying to make sure that we support our development and business community.
All right, thank you. That concludes the presentation. Now, I will call each council member by name and in order of position number to solicit questions. Deputy Mayor Zornz, do you have a question or comment?
This is Deputy Mayor Zornz here. Just a quick question. Is there a timeframe of when we revisit this and we talk about the window of restarting deadlines again?
We would revisit this again in six months.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Thompson, do you have a question or comment?
I'll be voting yes on this. Anything we can do to ease the transition back, I think is a good thing to do.
Councilmember McAuliffe, question or comment?
Yes, so, so let me ask you this. Right now, because we have shut down construction, there is no permitting, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. We're actually, the permit staff and the planners continue to work. It's the ability to do construction. So the governor, with his stay-at-home order, unless it's an essential project or under specific guidelines has an exemption, construction projects are stopped. And so this provides an extension for those projects or any other projects that might be in the queue.
Right, but if there is an essential project, the permitting will still continue, is that correct?
The permitting, the permitting is continuing regardless of whether it's essential or not. When we issue permits, we're indicating on the permits that the issuance of this permit does not authorize construction to begin unless it falls within the exemptions provided by the governor.
I appreciate that. That's really important. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Councilmember McNeil, no questions at this time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doer?
I just, this is Councilmember Doer. I just wanted to express that I think it's really important that we don't let any of these permits lapse, so that when this is finally over, we can get back to business and building. So I appreciate the recommendation for this to happen.
And Councilmember Agnew? Question or comment?
I agree. I was wondering, what impact will this have on the construction of the fire stations from the public safety level?
None at this time.
Thank you very much.
All right, so would council like to make a motion? Please so by using WebEx Messenger. All right, Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommended action to approve an interim ordinance temporarily suspending development and permit.
All right, I think I saw Councilmember.
Agnew.
Agnew was first. Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I second the action.
All right, it's scrolling up on me a little bit. It's, so, all right, great. So we have a motion to approve an interim ordinance temporarily suspending development application and permit timelines. It's been moved by Councilmember McNeil and seconded by Councilmember Agnew. If anyone wishes to discuss, please indicate on your WebEx meeting messenger now. Councilmember McNeil, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is Councilmember McNeil. Again, I want to thank the city for their forward thinking on this, and I know that more is to come by our state, but with over 2,700-plus construction companies shut down right now, allowing these projects to get started back up again and giving the contractors and owners an extension is very helpful to them. And my hat's off to the city for bringing this forward and being out in front of it so that we can get our development back.
Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. So seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed by vote by roll call. Clerk will call each of your names in position number.
Deputy Mayor Zornz, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
This is Deputy Mayor Zornz, yea.
Councilmember Thompson, please indicate yea or nay.
This is Councilmember Thompson, yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
Councilmember McAuliffe, yea.
Councilmember McNeil, please indicate yea or nay.
Councilmember McNeil, yea.
Mayor Olson, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
Mayor Olson, yea.
Councilmember Doer, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
Councilmember Doer, yea.
Councilmember Agnew, please indicate yea or nay to the motion.
Councilmember Agnew, yea.
Thank you. The motion passes Kerry 7-0.
Great, thank you, everyone. All right, so with that passing, so there's no further business, so I'll call adjournment to the meeting at 6:37 p.m. Thank you, everyone.